Good evening, welcome everybody. This is hereby given a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the 25th day of September 2019 at the hour 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on September 20th, 2019 at 1:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. Would you have the presence of a quorum? All board members are present at this time. Let me please have everyone stand for the pledge and the invocation.
Pledge and lead. This is to the last high flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carlos.
And Father, we thank you again for another opportunity, Lord, to come together and work with our board members and staff and get this board meeting agenda going. We just thank you for that opportunity. We ask you that you will keep us with our minds open to learn everything about each agenda and that we can grasp the idea behind the agenda item and that we can look forward to doing our best that we can for our community, Lord. That we always have positive things coming up and look forward to hoping our customers would be number one. And we just want to thank you for everything you've blessed us in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Staff, board, public, anyone at this time like to comment, share, discuss anything? Nothing at this time? Thank you. Moving on to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 12th, 2019. So everyone had a chance to review the minutes.
Certainly.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Item five, general managers' report, Carlos.
As you're on the audio video update, we have looked at the video and we have discovered that we need to upgrade some of it and make some changes. We talked to the people from the video, the producer, and we're gonna meet with them until next Tuesday for the reason that they're out of town all this week, they're traveling somewhere. So next Tuesday, we're scheduled to meet with them at nine o'clock and make some changes on the video because mine are stuff, but we need to make sure that we get it in there in the right category because there's two videos, one on the water and one on the sewer. And we just need to make sure that everything's correct on both.
If possible, can I see the before, I'd just like to see what the edit, you know, if you're doing it. I haven't seen any of it, so I'd like to see just for my personal, what do you have?
Yes, we can, we can send it to you.
If you can forward me the link, I'd like to look at it too, please.
Yeah, we can send it to all of you.
Okay.
Okay?
So we can add, you know, if there are any additional changes or comments anyone has? I think it's good so we can wrap it up.
And I know that Houston was there and he kinda, you know, got a good view of his view that he had from the beginning and we had our own stuff, so yeah.
Okay.
The more information that we can get from y'all, the better. Just send it out.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next one I have here, the next one is October the 9th is our next meeting, but on October 10th, we have a meeting with Texas Water Development Board on the Long Island Village information that we need to get together and talk with Noel Valdez and Moi and Hossa. It's on the 10th at 10 o'clock, so if we leave here at whatever time we finish, 7 o'clock, we won't be able to make it, the flights are earlier than that. So we'd like to reschedule the 9th meeting to the 8th. If we can do that, it'll be better for us to come and be at least not trying to hurry up or we probably have to drive to get out at 5 or 7 that night.
Great idea, sounds good.
Drive and then.
I could do the 8th.
The 8th?
I can't, but can everybody else?
I honestly have got, I'm going to San Antonio that day.
Oh.
Can you make it?
Yeah.
Can you make it? There's a quarrel.
If that's how it is and it's gonna be close, because I said I can make it, but it was a wishy-washy, yes, I can make it, so maybe we should do it every day. I can do Monday.
Do you want to just postpone it to the.
Following week.
Following week or put everything on the 23rd agenda?
Whatever y'all decide, 20, the 23rd? It'll be the, let me see.
It's meeting with.
23rd after. Oh, really, thank you. It's up to y'all, we can wait for this date. I don't think we have much going.
What a boring.
We're gonna wait until the 23rd.
I have two items.
Two that are necessary or.
On Wednesdays.
I suppose they could wait.
We could wait till the 23rd.
Do we need to do anything in preparation of getting this most recent information to the bond committee?
Uh, well, the bond committee, what happens is that Charles is gonna talk about it in a few minutes and we need more information, we don't have.
Yeah.
See, the contingencies are like minus 20% and plus 30, which is a big window there.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is if Charles needs information from us before he goes back to the bond committee, now he's saying he's gonna have to wait for the end of October.
Well, I don't think canceling the October 9th meeting would affect, you know, our presentations to the bond committee.
We're not approving anything for your, we're not approving anything for your.
We still have a committee, a bond committee meetings from this, this night, but he's got the date, we have the date when we get all the committee in.
Yeah, I mean, I always think the earliest we'd want to meet for our next committee meeting is gonna be mid-October, the October 15th range, and so we can give an update on the 23rd anyway.
While we're talking about schedules, I have a schedule conflict on Wednesdays for the next two months. Is Thursdays a possibility for anybody at this group, same time, but on Thursdays?
I can do any day of the week.
Thursday would be. To change the meetings for the next couple of months?
12 and the 26th, these two days right here, we'll be the next.
Well, you're in, you're in September.
Or at least the next one and then look our calendars and see.
Well, that's December.
I just would hate to have to choose.
8th and the 22nd and then the Thursday, 27th.
You got your finger on the wrong days, good old Carlos, that's Friday, that's Friday.
Yeah, go to this Thursday.
7, 21.
Can we do the next one, whatever we're talking about now on Thursday, and then look at that as a group and see if Thursday could work?
I don't mind changing the next one.
Thursday is the day of the meeting.
Not the 10th, I'm just saying.
What happens is on these, usually like both to December and Thanksgiving.
Moving forward after that.
Thanksgiving's the last week this year.
Yeah, it's late, 28.
7 and 21st is fine with me.
But isn't Thanksgiving the 28th?
Yeah, that's why. It's like this, yeah, so 1 to 14 would be the day that we'd be in because of 28.
So we're possibly only gonna have one meeting in October and November? Is that the way the calendar's looking?
November and December.
I love that.
October, November, and December, we're looking at just one meeting only.
Of course, October, yes.
So we're looking, is that?
Unless we have something different, we'll notify you guys and let you know. Because right now, it's okay to have October 23rd or 24th.
I don't want anything to slow down the bond.
Progress or anything, yes. And I personally, everyone's kind of adjusted to the meetings and the schedules.
I don't think the bond will be affected in any way, committee.
The bond committee, they, all the information's coming from Charles and above, the board doesn't approve anything, any of that information going out.
Right, right, so I think it'll be okay, even if we have one, 23rd, 24th.
Why don't we just decide on October for now?
Yeah.
And wait on the.
Then we'll talk about the rest in two weeks.
In between the heels.
So we'll have the 23rd, the next one is okay with you or the 24th?
No, he's saying he'd rather.
I won't be here on Wednesdays for a little while.
Wednesday, no, and this one's Thursday, yes.
Pretty competitive football, it's gonna be going on.
Okay, so.
Would be preferred by me, but I don't want, I mean, I'm just trying to be.
We're skipping this one, so 24th?
Or meet earlier on Wednesday.
Stop.
I'm, so, so, I mean, I, I just, the set, I mean, I respect you got, what you got going on, but I also, the meetings have been set in stone and everyone knows when they are and what's going on. And I just hate to throw and change all that, that's my personal.
Is, is a 4:30 PM start a?
Is a 4:30 possible on Wednesday?
I have no problem with that.
It's fine with me.
So you're saying 4:30 on the 23rd?
Would be, that'd be awesome.
Is it better?
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
And then we'll discuss the rest.
Perfect, thank you guys.
Thank you guys, that's it, that's all I have.
So do we have a meeting?
23rd at 4:30.
The first meeting in October?
Next regularly scheduled meeting will be October 23rd at 4:30 PM.
Because we'll be out of town, I think you're gonna be out of town and you're gonna be out of town too in October.
He'll be back by then.
Yeah, that's the 10th, the 9th, aren't they?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, one meeting on the, on October, the 23rd at 4:30. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, Charles.
All right, this is, yeah, this is a follow-up from the last meeting, just trying to put a one-page spreadsheet, letting you know where the capital projects are sitting right now. Stop in the mic. And so, so basically, the first two items are the elevated storage tank we have, you know, talking about the 75,000 gallon tank in Laguna Vista and 300,000 gallon tank in Port Isabel. And so we have a project cost that's identified and at this stage where we're at a 1 to 15% completion, the contingency range they're putting out there is anywhere from minus 20% to plus 30%. So that's, that's the summary we're looking at for rehab and of course, the scenarios, we're looking at building most likely one tank to replace these two tanks on the replacement side. But that report's gonna be coming out in October 9th, so, you know, it's probably good to have that meeting on the 23rd to give us more time to conduct the reviews and, you know, we'll be more complete, you know, when we present on the 23rd.
Who's me?
Uh, me, maybe, or yeah, and the committee if we're.
So this is.
We meet with the committee, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And so that's, that's basically what's going on with the elevated storage tanks. I mean, I noticed that I don't have a lineup cost item on here for the water distribution at the Sapo Dr. Island, but of course, we still need to look at the valves and all that's really tied to the model update as well. So I'll have to update the, this spreadsheet to make sure, you know, we're not dropping the ball on the distribution needs at the island, it's just, it's missing off the spreadsheet right now. And so as far as the next item is our raw water transfer pump station in Laguna Vista going from the Laguna Vista Reservoir to Port Isabel. There's two alternatives, looking at either rehab or a replacement and of course, the cost difference, if we do a rehab, we're looking at a $2.1 million cost versus a replacement would be 4.5 million. So, you know, ultimately, we do need to do a replacement, but, you know, the question is if it's, if it's not feasible from a funding standpoint, you know, the rehab's gonna be the, the option that's, that keeps it, keeps the cost control in place. And then the next project is number four, or it's, this one's looking really good as far as the gravity main route on 100, pretty much running where the existing private lift stations are at along all those, those alignments crossing more or less at the old Water Burger and tying into the existing system where we have enough depth. So that, that job's looking at right now 1.1 million for that alignment, you know, with the contingency variance on there. And then the, of course, the last one, but not least, is Water Plant 1 and it's a combination of the 5 M G D M F filters, the clarifier restorings, the ground storage tanks and, you know, pretty much we're at 18.7 million for that job. So just with these projects alone, we're already at that 25 million mark for summary. And then, you know, we're gonna get the tank scenarios there due October 9th and I'll have to be following up on the distribution improvements on the island. And then lift station rehab, we'll be seeing those October 7th and the headwork, secret removal at Freeza Blanca, we'll be seeing that reported on the October 7th as well. That's, that's where things are standing at this point, if there's any questions.
The range of your contingencies, is that normal for projects like this?
It's the first time I've seen this reference in that kind of range.
Is this a freezing nickel?
Yeah, it's, it's their methodology for how they report their, their estimates. Yeah, they're referencing some standard project management in the level of completion.
Excuse me, back to your chart, okay, you have 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 4 to 5. Okay, 1 is rehabbing the existing Laguna Vista storage tank, right?
Yeah, we just do a rehab on it.
2 is rehabbing Port Isabel, right?
Yep.
3A is what?
3A is the raw water pump station where we pump at a Laguna, at the water plant 2 in Laguna Vista. It's, when you drive in, it's that first pump station on the left side of the reservoir, it'd be just restoring that, doing the structural improvements, new electrical and getting those pumps up to 5 M G D capacity so we can make that delivery to Port Isabel to, for the raw water to get to Water Plant 1.
Reserve 1.
Yeah, to Reserve 1.
What we don't have on here is the, which I think you're trying to get at, the cost of the new storage tank.
It's coming, yeah.
Right, it's, it's, right. I mean, that, that would essentially replace IDs 1 and 2, would become a new tank.
It's in the bottom.
Well, you're getting there, Charles, you're getting there, but.
Yeah, well, it's, it's part of having the incomplete set of information, but a, a replacement, if you combine 1 and 2 together, I mean, a replacement tank is gonna roughly be that same number, it's not gonna be a big change if, if those two rehabs become a replacement.
To take down two towers and build a brand new one?
Yeah.
It's only gonna be 1.5 million?
Yeah, it'll be in that range, I mean, that, I mean, we, you know, that's what I would anticipate, there's not gonna be a major change in the cost for them.
Which elevated tank is in the worst condition?
Port Isabel.
Which is the one that needs to be replaced?
Port Isabel.
Laguna Vista 2?
I mean, it's gonna be still small.
Over 50 years old?
And it was probably built in the late 50s.
70 years old.
Yeah.
But the Laguna Vista, you say it's undersized and.
Yeah, from the modeling, you know, when, when they were doing the system modeling in 2012, now they show a drain in 10, 15 minutes and I think maybe residents out there might notice when the pumps are being turned on and off at the plant, that's how quick the area is affected, but that's, you know, that's just a general issue there.
All right, if, if a new storage tank in Laguna Vista, let's say it was a million dollars and a new storage tank in Port Isabel was a million dollars, if you had only $1 million to spend, where would you spend it?
Laguna Vista, it would make sense.
All right, tell, I know why, but tell me why, I think I know why.
Well, because based on the number of connections, we have enough elevated storage.
Growing connections.
TCQ, yeah, even, even planning out through year 2040, I mean, we have enough elevated storage to meet our population growth and I mean, if anything, growth is gonna, where our, our district has room to grow is out, you know, on 510 in Laguna Vista area and we have that small tank anyway. And with Laguna Heights, you know, and Laguna Vista and the two tanks on the island, I mean, that should be balanced from a hydraulic standpoint in terms of your storage throughout the system.
And that's the, the one in the heights is not gonna need any work?
Yeah, it'll remain in place, just the altitude though.
Is it the, is it the youngest or the newest?
I would think so.
Yes, yes, the newest.
So these prices do not include if you had to build two new towers?
No, you'd probably have to double that, you know, from, from what's 1 to 2.
Based on the, I think if I remember correctly from the last meeting, we were kinda moving towards just getting the one in Laguna Vista, Laguna Heights up and running, doing a new one in Laguna Vista and just taking this one down.
Right, we'd be, we'd be.
That still meets our requirement?
Yes, yeah, did you mention in the two tanks, the, both Port Isabel and Laguna Vista, just taking them out of service and then building one new tank to replace those two in the, at larger size, you know, in more ideal location.
With possibly a golf ball printed on the side?
See.
I like where you have.
We'll look for sponsors.
We're looking for sponsors?
We know a couple.
Million dollar sponsors?
You talking about the golf course, there's only money left, it has to buy water, like everybody else. Charles, just work on this a little bit more as far as your, this is a whole lot better than it was two weeks ago, but.
Yeah, it's getting there, but it'll help getting these reports in place, especially now that we're looking at our next meeting being October 23rd, I mean, that should be able to give us a full picture at that stage, so we can.
One of the, one of the reasons that we had to move forward with the contingencies and all the numbers that we have there is because the committee was pushing us like, get some numbers, get some numbers, and that's the best we could get.
We have a good aggressive committee and they, they want, they wanna see things happening.
Yes.
They're not passive, they're active and aggressive.
That, that way they can have the correct numbers that are ready to use, I don't know to everybody else.
That's a good thing.
So that's why we.
And this doesn't even include the financing costs and the underwriting costs anymore?
No, not yet.
That's 50 million by the time you pack all that on.
But we, in October, we'll get those numbers and get it like closer to what the actuals. And we still need the demolition numbers, the cost, the mology's one and that one, and then build a new one and we'll get those numbers on the 12th.
So when do you think you'll have another meeting with your bond committee?
I mean, I always shoot it for mid-October, like the October 15th range somewhere.
15th, because on the 9th, we get the numbers on the tax, so.
Yeah.
That was the one that was pending the most.
Because I think they feel, sort of feel like they've sort of been, they haven't.
We're moving slower than they thought we were.
Yeah, we've got a long time without a committee meeting, so.
Yes, because of the, the numbers are not correct, you know, it's too far off, 20, minus 20 and plus 30 on one side is, is too far.
Yeah, well, we wanted to avoid that, that issue of having meetings when you're not showing any progress or they're hearing the same story, you know, at the next meeting.
Yeah, we're doing the same thing over and over and just, we don't have the right numbers, so, but we'll get it done right on the 15th, we'll have that meeting and we'll let them know as soon as, uh.
Charles, another question, the unfunded lift stations, are those seven or how many, many were we talking about?
I just, I, that sounds about right and, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, it's, it's upstairs, I don't have it, I don't have it with me apart from.
And another question is, have you updated any of this? Have any of this changed?
No, well, all those are still part of the job, the things.
It's a different project, I know, but.
Yeah, we've been doing force main inspections over the past week and if there's anything that we're looking at requesting to, to add to this, it's gonna be some force meter repair, like lift station 17.
I thought we were gonna drop some things.
No, there's, there's a good contingency in there where we can add work to the, to that school project.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, but, but in terms of the work we're, we're aiming for is adding some force mains, get some of the pipeline improvements including the revenue for, for the lift station side.
The, are we gonna have to replace any lines or add any lines for the raw water to plant number one?
Um, no, because there's already parallel pipes, I, the pipeline isn't a capacity problem, it's, it's just.
There are lines, there's lines, there are.
Yeah, there's already lines there, there, there's two lines.
Where are they located?
They were parallel, they're all the way along Woody's Lane, they cut up along, close to Walmart, between Walmart and the church, and then they run all the way down Highway 100 up until the entrance to Water Plant 2.
When you say Woody's Lane, are they in that easement that we have, just on the other side of the warehouse?
No, they're on the pavement, they're underneath the road itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that conclude?
Yeah, that concludes the, here's for you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, consider and discuss for possible approval abandonment and relocation of utility easements for Columbia Padre Boulevard LLC lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and lot 9, block number 96, Padre Beach Section 7, to the South Padre Island.
All right, yeah, and basically what I included in, in, in the backup was the meets and downs description, I don't know if it really tells you the whole picture or whatever we say, phrase that, it doesn't tell you the whole picture. It's basically, they're changing eight lots into one larger lot and, and just to fit whatever they're proposing to improve, they, they wanna vacate the existing easement and build a new easement, you know, a 20-foot easement along the Lisace and Laguna Boulevard and then also along the back lots for the Lots on Padre Boulevard that'll remain in place. And so essentially, the, they've also submitted the plat to South Padre Island, so it's gonna have to go through the South Padre Island Planning and Zoning Committee, review and approval, and get routed for signatures. And so essentially, in our, at this stage, we would basically need to give consent on our side to, to relocate these, if they're requesting.
Yeah, I talked to the planning director about it and he said there's no issues there. I talked to Charles about it, we don't have any infrastructure there, so it should be fine.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Seconded by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor? Any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item number eight.
Well, yeah, yeah, there is one part, because one thing we're gonna require in the letter is they're gonna have to build, loop a water line, because, because for lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, I mean, when we send this letter tomorrow consenting to the easement, they're gonna have to build a water line in, in the backside of the, of the property.
So do you want to amend the motion?
Um, yeah, I suppose, I mean, they would, they would have to, I mean, it would be comments in the site plan, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't sign off on the plat until they have the water line looping place, so I don't know if that's necessarily tied to easement, but it's, it's part of what we'd have to review in the planning process.
Brian, do we need to amend the motion or?
Might as well.
Yes.
Doesn't hurt.
Motion made to amend the, a motion by Mr. Houston to add the subject letter.
Yeah.
Clause per Charles's request?
Yeah, require a water line extension to maintain services to lot 5 through 6, 7, and 8.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The second by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor? They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item eight, consider and discuss for possible approval of audit engagement letter from Carr Rigs and Ingram LLC with Laguna Madre Water District for an audit of the financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2019.
So the, our auditors were awarded a, a three-year contract last year, so this is the, the second year of their contract. This is just an engagement letter that outlines what their responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are. It's a, a standard engagement letter.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor? They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial report for July 2019. Everyone had a chance to review them, any questions, comments, anything in particular? We're gonna go through them one by one, what would you like to do? More staff?
I'll move to a second.
Motion for approval and acknowledgement by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor? They are, any opposed, none, thank you. Moving on to item 10, consider and discuss for possible approval of workers' compensation liability and property insurance proposals for the coverage period 2019 through 2020.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to re-get a new insurance for this coming year. We went and asked for votes and we are, the staff is recommending to get, to approve the highlighted amounts on the second page.
I'll move to a group, staff recommendation.
How did they save us, well, what did we pay last year, I guess?
Last year, we paid 109,086 dollars, we're paying 755 more than last year. The 169 that you're, 165 that you're seeing there is what we bought.
Claims to tell me what.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Lallana, or, sorry. Motion made by Mr. Avalos and seconded by Mr., Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor? They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 11, consider and discuss for possible ratification of roof repair payment for customer service entrance and drive-through.
Yeah, we issued a purchase order to replace, to repair the roof.
Didn't we give us a while back?
No, it was rejected, so we negotiated a quote with the awardeur, but for the vendor that we want to award, he came with like a thousand dollars less, so with that amount, we will be able to give him a appeal to do that, to do that job. But I'm foreseeing labor due to some steel metal sheets under the roof tile that went to an extra cost for extra labor.
So this is for $825? Is that what we're asking to approve this by?
No, it's the $10,323 that was...
Okay.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, it went over by about $300 and some dollars.
Okay. There's been a motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Lallana. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 12, consider and discuss, consider and review expenditures for September 1 through September 15th, 2019. Any questions, comments about anyone in particular? Otherwise, a motion to acknowledge. Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Houston. Are all those acknowledging? They are? None acknowledging. Thank you. Item 13, there is no executive session. Item is not necessary. Moving on to item 14, there is no action on that. So we're at item 15, meeting is adjourned at 6:00 PM even.